To the Republic for which it stands, one nation of God and visible liberty and justice for all.
All right, good evening, everybody. Chairman's report, I'd like to acknowledge a donation, the Board of Education would like to acknowledge and thank the Monroe Rotary Club for their annual donation of dictionaries to all our third grade students. And they do that every year, and they've been doing that, geez. I mean, I know Emily got one when she was in third grade, and that's many, many years ago. How long have they been doing that?
I forget, it was 15 or 19. They said it the other day at their meeting, and I forgot, but it's been a long time.
Yeah, so we appreciate that. I have three of those lovely dictionaries at home, and they are much appreciative. Appreciative, everybody's much appreciative of those, the Rotary Club doing that. We will move on to our consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve? Thank you, Jerry. Nick, second. Any discussion? Do you want to talk about our special education teacher?
Sure, yeah, we're happy to have Kristi Sees, who will be joining our special education team on December 1st. Kristi will be serving in a split position between Massey and STEM to help address the large caseload of students at both locations. I know Darlene has talked about this a few times.
Great, thank you. Does anybody have any other questions or comments on the consent agenda? All right, hearing none, all in favor? Thank you, motion passes. We will move on to our reports of our committees and liaisons, and our first is our Massey board reps.
Good evening, Board of Education. I hope everyone's having a marvelous Monday. The Massey Be Positive Club will be hosting a fundraiser this Saturday at Terra Cafe to raise money for, to support families of children with cancer and for cancer research. The Memories Matter Club raised almost $1,000 for Alzheimer's awareness through fundraising at the Purple Out Game, selling bracelets, signs, and T-shirts. The Massey Drama Department had their production of The Legends of Sleepy Hollow on November 8th, and the show was a massive success. And Mrs. Gaber's forensics class conducted a mock forensics investigation surrounding stolen cookies at the Massey Mart, and her class identified Mr. Swenson's fingerprints and confirmed he was a suspect. And tomorrow, there will be a half-day due to parent-teacher conferences.
In Massey sports, Massey Girl Soccer defeated Brookfield in the first round of the state tournament. Congratulations to Massey seniors Kat Galant, who committed to Villanova, Mary Henry, who committed to Fairfield University, and Juliana Pagano, who committed to Bucknell University, on signing their letter of intent last week. And congratulations to Kate Winnower, who came in fifth in the Class M diving championships. Winnower broke her own dive school record by 11.2 points. And Massey Winter Sports are now underway. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will say that I got texts from my child on Steve's takedown, which were quite interesting photos.
She got handcuffed.
Oh, no, they, Brooke had him on the floor and did a leg sweep.
Taser, you know what, taser?
I don't think they tasered him, but it was, and you can see in one of the pictures, you can see all the kids there with their phone, because it happened in the cafeteria, so. It's very entertaining, the pictures I got. No video, unfortunately.
Good sport, he was.
I know. I texted Joe afterwards, I'm like, Steve got arrested. But I knew that was all just a joke. Thank you so much. Anybody else have committee reports this evening? All right, we will move on to public participation. Nobody signs up in advance, so I will just open it up for anybody here.
Thanks, Jeff.
Okay, yes, name and address, please, for the record.
My name is Tracy Torres. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
I'm at 94 Riding Ridge Road.
Thank you.
I noticed an update to the Code of Ethics in the proposed changes today, and I appreciate that. That gives me actually a lot of confidence in this body. I'm here today, though, because some new information has come to light surrounding ethics once again. You probably knew that your member submitted a press release to the media in an effort to cancel a BOE candidate running for a seat. But you might not have realized that nearly one-third of that press release actually wasn't focused on the candidate, it was focused on a parent, not one running for office. In his PR blitz, your member did his best to cancel both a citizen running for a seat and a parent. In this press release, your member called out the parent by name and characterized a presentation he made at an August Board of Ed meeting as "spewing false statements," faulty, and propaganda-like." Your member told the media all this because our parent dared to use as sources the Journal of the American Medical Association and the Wall Street Journal. I hope I don't need to draw this out any further. Monroe parents with whom I've spoken about this, left, right, and center, are not happy. But unfortunately, there's even more to the story. Attached to that press release, your member included a digital copy of a PowerPoint document our Monroe parent presented in that meeting. This raises two questions for me. How did your board member get a hold of that digital file? Our parent didn't share it with him. He only sent it to one member of the board, and only so that his presentation would be ready in time for the meeting. So how did your member get that file? And is it allowed for him to use his privileged position on the board to access and distribute materials in an attempt to take down a parent for comments made at a board meeting? And question number two, what would motivate a board member to go that far to take action against a parent? Irony of all ironies, in his press release, your member used his perch to declaim his views about behaviors which are, and I quote, "unacceptable and antithetical to how the Board of Education members should be publicly conducting themselves." That's ironic, coming from within the very same document in which he himself displayed the behavior he accused another of. So tonight, as a parent, I'm wondering the following. Should we now expect that board members with immunity may attempt to incite hatred by the media if we say something that one of you disagrees with? And if you don't want that, please show us that we can speak without fear by acting on this violation. We parents just want to come together for the betterment of our children. We don't want ugly politics in our Board of Education, and I'm sure you don't either. So I'm asking for action tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right.
Can I just make a comment, sorry? The, because I missed the last item on the agenda, which was reports to the committees and liaisons. So the Policy Committee did meet this evening. We only were able to review one policy on the agenda that had four on it plus. So we will be sending that forward to the board for review the next, in the next meeting. There is, there was an item on the Policy Committee agenda for tonight regarding Code of Ethics and a change that would, that we're proposing for that, but that was not reviewed yet this evening.
Okay, thank you. All right, we will move on to our report of the superintendent.
Rodney, you want to start with the October fund statement?
Sure.
Budget transfers?
Sure, Joe. In the Board of Ed operating budget, there's not a lot of excitement going on right now. The biggest issues that you all know that we have to work through are addressing the salaries, which are currently in the operating budget, and whether we're going to be pulling them out and covering them with the grant or not. So we'll be working through that over the next couple of months with the Board of Finance. Regarding, the other main thing was this past week, Joe, myself, and Jack sat with SEDEXO regarding some of their, some of their billing, they needed to correct some errors. So if you, if you look at page, I think it's on the last page of your packet, it shows about a $350,000 cash balance in the cafeteria account. We have not paid a bill yet for this year. We'll be, we'll be paying those now that we've worked through the reporting errors on their part. And as a whole, we're trending very well for the year right now, so no issues from that perspective. That's pretty much all I had to say. I don't know if anyone has any questions.
Nick.
I know the Board of Finance is meeting, well, they're scheduled to meet this Thursday.
I don't believe they're going to be meeting this week.
Okay. Well, so my question was going to be, I guess, whenever they meet next, is there going to be, like, an ask that they cover the salaries? Because I, I don't know, unless we explicitly ask, will you commit or will you buy special appropriation, cover these salaries, we can't start any of the other programs we want. I don't know if that's really directed towards you or to the superintendent or the chair, but I think there has to be an actual ask, will you cover this? It has to be yes or no, so that we can either start programming, the tutoring line, the, all the things we talked about, or if it's not going to happen, then it has to come from the grant, and we have to figure it out in the budget.
We could do that after next meeting, absolutely, absolutely.
Maybe there needs to be an actual letter sent, so that it's on the record saying, asking for those items to be covered.
Okay.
That way it's been submitted in writing and
Okay.
needs to be addressed. All right.
The next item on the agenda are review of the budget transfers. These are, I was actually hoping to have some larger transfers between the certified staff accounts, but those were not ready for tonight. These were some transfers that came from Massey and the Athletic Department. And the requests are attached from the, so the first one, $875. It was moving from supplies fresh to supplies other student activities. And the reason given was supplies needed for student activities for, an example was Hispanic Heritage Dinner Dance. Second item was a $2,000 transfer request, again, from the principal at Massey. And the reason for supplies needed for student activities, same reason. So, and the third one was Athletic Department, which, again, none of these transfers are out of the ordinary. As the year goes on, you find you might not need as much money in one account and more in another, so. The total of the transfers were less than $4,000. And you'll be asked to vote on those later.
Anybody have questions for Ron on these? All right, they will be up further in the meeting for a vote.
Just wanted to share some updated guidance with the board from the Department of Public Health. For the past, past two school years, we've been dealing with quarantining students. At first, we were dealing with 14-day quarantines, then it was 10-day quarantines. This year, we moved into seven-day quarantines where students could test out of the, out of the quarantine, or return back to school on the eighth day, provided they had a negative test after day five. There has been a lot of conversation with superintendents around the state with the Department of Public Health. We've been on the phone with the Department of Public Health every Tuesday for the last 61 weeks. Since this started, we've been on with the Department of Public Health. They have a new commissioner who talked about a new protocol, and the purpose of this screen-in-state protocol is really to try to provide some relief to families and to try to, again, start to step down some of the measures we've taken over, over the last 18 months to get kids and keep kids in school, which is where we want, which is where we want them to be. A lot of this is predicated on transmission rates staying low, so I want to, want to just kind of, you know, put that caveat in. If the Department of Public Health sees that there is an increase in transmissions, then they will, you know, move away from this, what they're calling the Screen-in-State Protocol. What I want to just first mention is that the Screen-in-State Protocol is optional for families. So if a family is, finds out that their child is a close contact, they still have the ability to do a seven-day quarantine, like we've been doing this year, or even a 10-day quarantine. The difference between the seven days and the 10 days, like I said, the seven days is you can test after day five, return to school on day eight. Some, some folks have opted for, to remain in the 10-day quarantine, and you don't have to test after day 10, you just have to monitor for symptoms for four more days. But the Screen-in-State Protocol allows students and staff who are unvaccinated or partially vaccinated to remain in school after close contact with a COVID-19 case. Whereas before, they would be, if they were identified as a, as a close contact, they would have to be out for, again, this year, we've been primarily using the seven-day quarantine. Now they can stay in, but there's certain conditions for that. I want to explain the conditions, and then on the next slide, there's also cases where this protocol does not apply. First thing is that the contact occurred during the day, and it's from, it's from pickup to drop-off, so the bus counts. And that's going to be really important for, that is a really important piece for our staff, our principals, and our nurses, who have had to quarantine and identify close contacts, do contact tracing on the buses. It's extremely difficult with the younger kids, because you try to get the bus video, and our elementary kids, you can't see them. You can't see them on the seats, they're too, they're too low. So you kind of have to guess, you know, when they got up, who's sitting next to them, and identify where they are, either when they got on the bus or get off the bus. So this will, this will apply from pickup to drop-off during the school day. And it really applies for in-person learning. The other, the other case has to be that the contact in the case were both mask-drying exposure. So if they're in class together and they're, and they're properly masked, we can use the Screen-in-State Protocol. If they're outdoors, it's okay if they're masked or unmasked, provided that they're supervised. That would be the case with our students all the time, whether they're on a mask break or they're outside for PE or recess or something like that, they're always being supervised. And then the other piece is that the contact obviously has to remain asymptomatic. If they, if they become symptomatic at any point, they would obviously go back to the traditional isolation, contact to school. So this gives us some relief during the day. The big pieces in the classroom and in the, and on the buses. There's a few times where this protocol is not in play. I just want to make sure this is, this is clear with, with everybody. First of all, if there's a close, if there's close contact during PE, that's fine. If there's close contact during sports or other athletic activities after school, Screen-in-State is not a protocol that will be, that will, that can be used. You still have to go through the regular quarantining procedure. So if we have a situation on a team and somebody is, you know, unvaccinated or partially vaccinated, they still have to follow the quarantine protocol. If the, similar to that, if the, if the contact occurs outside of school at a social event or something like that, or if they party, Screen-in-State does not apply. Both the contact in the case or not consistently or incorrectly wearing a mask, that could be, so there could be some instances of that in the school day. The tough thing with, with this, not the tough thing with this new protocol, but it keeps in play the cafeteria, which has always been a tough place for us. We have spaced the kids out as far as we can in all the schools, but they're not always six feet, so the cafeteria is still in play. If we have a close contact in the cafeteria within six feet without masks, so a close contact is three feet with masks in the classroom, six feet without the mask, usually like in the cafeteria. Screen-in-State is not a, is not applicable. Household contacts are not included. So if a sibling is a contact, or if a sibling contracts COVID-19, the other sibling has to, has to stay home as well, and they're not allowed into the Screen-in-State Protocol. And then the last one is just if the contact cannot consistently correctly wear a mask or, or they can't perform daily symptom screenings, then, you know, Screen-in-State is not appropriate in that, in that situation. So just to give you a quick little rundown of what Screen-in-State will look like, basically, in order to stay in the Screen-in-State Protocol, if the student is unvaccinated or partially vaccinated, like, like we said, they must affirm, and we've done this through a Google Doc that will go home to parents, that they've read and understand the Screen-in-State requirements. And basically, what those requirements are is that for 14 days from the date of exposure, they will have to monitor their symptoms. Obviously, if it's a younger child, it's going to have to be the parent monitoring the symptoms. We give them a list with all the symptoms, and it's all, it's all the symptoms that we've talked about for the past two years. Fever, chills, headache, cough. If they start to show, if they start to show any of those symptoms, the parent should keep them at school and, and notify the school that they're beginning to show symptoms. This, this applies only, again, to in-person learning. So if we have a situation with athletics or extracurriculars, other activities outside of this school day, unfortunately, the students still have to quarantine. So if a student is a close contact, they will still have to, you know, quarantine and avoid those activities after school. This is only, this is, the purpose of this was to get kids back in school, back into learning. And then the other thing is, anyone who's participating in the Screen-in-State Protocol should avoid what we call those aerosol-generating activities, so PE, wind instruments. The teachers will have to provide alternative assignments for them. Again, this is a step, you know, this year, when we came back to school, they reduced the distance for, to identify close contacts from six feet to three feet. I think this is the next step in kind of loosening some of the restrictions with the goal of getting more kids in school, keeping kids in school, and having a more traditional feel of school. It's not going to solve, as you, as you can see, it, it applies particularly to in-person learning, keeping the kids in class, which is good, we want, that's where we want, that's where we want kids. But it's not, it's not for every situation. Any questions, George?
What's the difference between the athletic activities and otherwise, the physical education? There's the variables with it?
I think, yeah, the rationale behind that is the PE setting is much more controlled. It's a teacher with X amount of kids, a kind of structured class, whereas athletics, it's a longer exposure time.
Other towns, two hot.
Exactly.
Right. And didn't CIAC just come out saying that vaccinated do not have to wear a mask?
I, ah, there's no one from the high school here. I know Lisa, I don't know if you heard anything. They, I heard that.
I saw an article on it, but I didn't see anything specifically.
But I think that was sent out prematurely.
Gotcha.
I don't think they have.
Decided yet?
I don't think they have made final guidance. They did something out initially, and there was a lot of word about, you know, the
But nothing.
Vaccinated not having to wear a mask, and unvaccinated would. But that has not, I don't think that's been officially
Gotcha.
And I don't know if that's going to be the case.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions on this? Again, it's a step, hopefully, you know, again, it's all contingent on, you know, our transmission rates staying, staying low. And, you know, the overall goal is to try to get kids and keep kids in school, so hopefully, that's where, that's where this leads us.
Is there a percentage you have to stay at? Or cut more?
There's a DPH meeting tomorrow, I think I was going to ask that, because they were very
Right.
They just said as long as transmission rates stay low, but they haven't really identified.
Because what's low? 1%, 2%?
Exactly. That's all I had.
All right, anybody have questions for Joe before we move on? All right, we will move on to old business. Discussion of board member budget assignments. Joe, how are you doing with?
Excellent.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you, everyone, for responding to those. We have everybody set up, so I'll just go through it here. And I've also sent the emails to all the principals and department heads. They have the information, so hopefully, they have, if they haven't reached out with you yet, they'll be reaching out to you shortly. Dave, we have Dave at the elementary schools. I did reach out to our new board members, Dennis Condon will be at, is going to meet with Mike Crowley at Jockey Hollow. Christine and Jerry are going to do Massey. Jeff is going to do Athletics. Alan and Shannon are going to do Special Education. Justin is going to do Professional Development and Curriculum. And Nick was going to do Facilities.
Great.
And if, if anyone, just send me an email if someone hasn't reached out to you just yet, and I'll make sure they do.
All right, we will move on then to our new business. First up, we have Curriculum First Review. I see Lisa making her way up. We have World Language Resource slash Courses, and Lisa Peterson is going to walk us through that.
Good evening, everybody.
Hi.
Hi. I actually have three proposals, so I'll do the Courses first, and then the textbook or the resources after. The first course, or series of courses, is not new. It is a continuation of something that we've been doing for the last two years. When the state graduation requirement changed and World Language, One Credit in World Language is required for all students to graduate high school, we developed a course that you approved, 1A and 1B, designed very much as a conversational course, not as a grammar-based reading and writing course. Truly conversational. It had, I believe, 11 students when it started. A few of them were seniors, I believe the retention rate was 90%, chose to go on to 1B. It's successful. So those students are now in 1B. So what we'd like to do is continue to offer these students a full sequence with a 2A and 2B continuation, designed much along the same skills development basis, speaking, conversation, but moving into new topics to broaden vocabulary and increase the, the student's ability in the language. What we've also done is the same teacher taught 1A, and then taught 1B. A new teacher's teaching 1A, she'll continue next year to teach 1B, so that we have truly a program where the teacher knows the students and their strengths and can help them build on them.
Great. Anybody have questions on that? Nick?
Will this, I, I'm looking at your presentation now. This, will this interfere with sections for other things, like the teacher who's going to now be teaching 2A and 2B, you're taking them away from Spanish 3 or 4?
I don't anticipate that. In, in French, it happens a lot where you have a multi-level course all in the same room, for exactly the reason you're talking about, sections that might have lower enrollment that would normally warrant a separate section. So I'm envisioning 1B next year and 2A being taught together in the same room.
Got it.
So the answer is no.
That's great, that 1A and 1B has become a success.
It's really successful. We're proud of it. The teachers have done a fantastic job.
Awesome. Anybody else have questions on 2A, 2B? All right.
No.
The second course proposal is new. And for years, we, we as a department have been tracking the number of students who might fill a classroom for this level. It's a Spanish-for-Spanish speakers course. And we have a number of student, a large number of students, whose background in the language, either as native speakers or a heritage speaker, you speak it in your home. The, obviously, the oral, their oral skills are advanced. But also, we have a population of students whose written, reading skills are advanced. They need, they made a class designed specifically for them. So we're proposing a Spanish-for-Spanish speakers course that would be a pre-AP course for our students. It would be placement by test. The department will design a placement test for these students. And it would be pre-UConn, pre-AP, to help prepare them at an advanced level. And also, some of our students who are ready for college-level work in sophomore year because of their language background, might want to continue as seniors, having already done the UConn and the AP course, potentially to take AP Spanish Literature, which is a very advanced reading and writing course. They might want to do that. We'd like to offer, I believe that would be a small number of students, but we'd like to offer that to them. And also, just an advanced course for students who may want to take UConn sophomore year, take AP junior year, but still continue in the development of their, of their language, so. I don't anticipate a textbook for this. It would be very much current events, real information. These students are at a level where we can, we can take Internet resources and, and use that to build the curriculum.
Now, would that be like a, will this class be like an honors-level class for kids who, you know, don't want to lose that whole honors?
Absolutely.
Okay. Anybody else have questions? All right. Last one.
Finally, is the book. The board has seen this book for several years now. We began integrating it with Level 5, Level 4, Level 3, and now I'm proposing Level 2 of the Spanish book. French also integrated it, but we're complete with, with that sequence. So this is the Level 2. It, it's designed as this entire series is. It, it's designed as this entire series is, to build those skills that students need in the real world, but also those skills that are tested in the apple for the sale of biliteracy and for AP. This is the level two, it continues with topics that very much mirror the topics we already have in our curriculum, but integrates a lot more real materials, assessments that are designed specifically to start building and scaffolding skills as students move through the sequence, and this is a copy of the book. So what I'm requesting is a classroom set, as we have with our other books, but it's, it's a larger number than in the past because when you talk about level two, levels one and two of Spanish, you're still talking about the middle school program. So we need a classroom set for Massey, for Jockey Hollow and for STEM, for all the teachers who teach it, and it's, it's, it's a large number of students, eighth graders and, and everybody at the high school as well.
Questions on this? Nick?
This would be for next school year.
For next school year, correct.
For next school year, so this would be in the upcoming budget?
Yeah.
This, okay, just wanted to make sure that we weren't doing anything outside the current budget, this is.
No, not the current budget.
Right, got it.
Anybody else have questions? All right, then these three will be on the agenda for the next meeting as a second review vote anticipated. Thank you, Lisa.
Thanks Lisa, don't go too far.
All right. Oh, is Lisa talking now?
Yeah.
Half day, okay. Next item is B, which is approval of the budget transfers as presented by Ron. Do I have a motion to approve those? Thanks, Nick. Second, Christine. Any discussion on them? All right, hearing none, all in favor? Thank you, motion passes. Up next is the discussion to revise the 21, 22 calendar from Massey High School with the vote anticipated. And Lisa's going to talk about a half-day option for the kids on December 13th about something that came up through NEESK as an opportunity.
Yeah, one of the nice things about the NEESK process and the accreditation visit is the ability to network with other administrators and teachers. So one of the committee members was an assistant principal from Daniel Hand and during that, during that visit, he shared some thoughts and some experiences that Daniel Hand had with a professional development opportunity to help teachers support students, especially this year with everything, you know, going on with the unfinished learning that we've, we've talked about. So Lisa can probably explain a little bit more, I think she talked to the, the team.
Steve and I had a Zoom meeting with the education professionals who are running this workshop that, or the, the series of, of trainings that was highly recommended and this, this group has worked with several Connecticut districts, a very popular share, it's actually hard to find a date, because their training specifically addresses how to help students be successful in, through adversity, how to help manage large-scale change, transitions, coming back to school. A lot of very useful, practical, highly recommended by the other administrators that we spoke to, the NEESK committee member obviously included. And both of the people who are offering this, it's called school climate consultants, are both former Connecticut educators, one a former Connecticut superintendent, and they've both done a lot of work with the state as an educational consultant. One of them is co-chair of a national school climate council with, with this, they have a lot of experience and a lot of training in these areas. And their first training session, they asked that we allow them a block of time for somewhere between around two and a half hours. And we asked if we could split it, you know, split it up, maybe do it after school, an hour at a time, and their first initial training is two and a half, is designed to be a two and a half hour training session. So we're asking for a half day on Monday the 13th for, for our teachers to participate in this, in this workshop and this training.
Great. I'm sure our students will be devastated. Half day.
Yeah.
Well, it's just Massey, it's just the Massey, the elementary schools and the middle schools, STEM and Jockey Hollow would still have their regular school dates, just the Massey.
Yeah, it would just be a Massey half day.
And that works for busing.
Yes.
There's not an issue.
Alan?
What would be the overarching objective of this? Like what do you want to walk away from it?
Practical strategies for teachers in classrooms to help our students manage coming back to school, manage the unfinished learning, practical strategies for teachers to help our students. That's the objective. What can we do, what can we do even slightly differently, what can we learn more to help our students?
Nick?
I just, two quick questions, the, well, three quick questions. School climate consultants, you've done your due diligence on this group, these are, you know, recommended and?
It was recommended by another school administrator, absolutely. I have bios on both of the people here. Steve, I believe, has spoken with them on multiple occasions.
That was Daniel Hand you said, correct?
Yes.
And after this original two and a half hour, how frequently would they, how frequently is their program that they come back?
They have a variety of specialized topics that they offer, but those would be in the place of a department meeting, you know, they're, they're one hour, it's their initial one that's a longer block of time.
So it's more à la carte for what is specific for your?
They do, they do have, offer specific topics, positive, building community, positive community inter, interactions, positive school climate, there are a variety of, of, of very specialized topics.
Great. And the last question is, just because I'm budget, I guess, this would obviously be coming out of the PD budget and there's funds in there to cover whatever we'd like to do this school year.
Yes.
Good. Just wanted to get that on the budget.
This year's budget?
This is not a budget request.
Anybody else have questions? David?
Lisa, is part of that conversation going to be with, with the consultants and the teachers about curriculum and the speed of the curriculum? Because I'm getting some feedback that we're back in school, we're back in and everyone jumped right back in and the kids aren't ready for that. And I think it's, it's okay if our staff slows down a little bit with, with curriculum and workload and I'm not saying, you know, go too easy on them, but at the same time, I think what Joe said is, you know, they lost a year and a half, so to kind of ease into it, because I know the kids are very, very stressed, speaking to a lot of parents about workloads and trying to ease back into it. So I was just wondering if that was hopefully part of the conversation about?
The best workshops are when new information is presented and then teachers can talk about what I can do with this and I, I envision, I would hope, there are a lot of questions and really taking a look at what I'm doing tomorrow in my class and, you know, a lot of their work talks about how adversity, trauma, change, transitions affect all of us and our, and our brains. And if you're trying to learn through that filter, what can we do as educators to better help you succeed in that? I think curriculum, lesson design, assessment design, all of that would definitely come into play in a, in a session like this.
Anybody else? All right, so do I have a motion to adjust the Massey High School calendar to make Monday, December 13th, a half a day for Massey students for the purpose of professional development for the Massey teachers? Thank you, Jerry, do I have a second? Thank you, David. Yes, Shannon?
I'm done.
Any other discussions? All right, hearing none, all in favor? Thank you, motion passes. We have come to the end of our agenda.
Oh.
Donna, it's so sad.
Are you sad?
Just don't make a motion, George.
Yeah, I just don't have to motion.
We're going to sit here for an hour.
We're not sitting here for an hour. But I just wanted to say one thing, I just wanted to say congratulations to everybody who won election and who are going to be on the board. I wish you good luck and good prudence in your service and I just hope that all of you remember to deal with each other with civility, professionalism, and above all, please remember that you are all here for the children of Monroe.
Good point.
And I just wanted to, on a personal note, say thanks to my husband and children who have put up with this for the past 12 years, their sacrifice and to me to serve for 12 years, I am eternally grateful for them because I could not have done this without their love and support and lots of no, not being home, being at meetings, my husband pulling up the slack with the three kids. I think Shannon, you said, did you ever miss a meeting? I did miss a meeting, July of 2012. I got rushed to the hospital while I was pregnant with Reagan. I called Jeff Gutman from the hospital and say, please tell them I'm not going to be at tonight's meeting, I'm in the hospital. They're like, you're either having the baby or your blood pressure's coming down and you're going home. Jeff doesn't tell them that I'm in the hospital and I'm missing the meeting. The next day Mark Hughes calls me up and yells at me for not telling anybody that I was missing the meeting. So I did miss a meeting during 12 years, but, so I just wanted to say thank you all. It was a pleasure working with all of you for the, some of you for the whole 12 years and some of you for their parts of the 12 years.
Thank you.
Nice job, Donna.
George, did you want to say anything?
I didn't prepare a speech.
I wrote a couple of notes, there was no speech.
I, 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 I share Donna's sentiments. Donna's time was occupied a hell of a lot more than mine was, being the chair, chairwoman over the past 12 years. She's really put in a lot of, she put her heart into it and a lot of her time and expertise. And so, you know, my thanks go out to Donna.
Thank you.
For, for being the chair for, for this time. And I'd like to thank all of you, obviously, that I've been lucky enough to serve with. I'd like to thank the, the voters who put me here. It's been an honor. So it's good working with all of you and like Donna said, you know, you're here for a reason and don't lose sight of that reason and Godspeed.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thanks, George.
All right, Jerry.
Chair, motion to adjourn?
Second?
No, I, I just wanted, almost, almost, I just, I didn't, I didn't prepare anything. I just have so much respect and I'm so honored to, to have served on the Board of Education with both of you. I think you bring a lot of, you know, strength and leadership and a wealth of information to us and, and did such a great job at keeping it professional and keeping us on focus with, why we're here for the kids in the district. And I've, I've learned, I, I still remember like it was yesterday, my first day sitting here in 2015 and just kind of taking everything in and I just learned so much from both of you and like it's a lot of time and I don't, a lot of time goes in behind the scenes too that people, you know, that people don't see.
And so willing to just, anytime we had a question, especially being new in the beginning, I could call Donna, George, anybody and picked up right away, helped me out, gave, I mean, invaluable.
Really.
We're really going to miss you guys.
Really, if you guys have, you know, really the, the Monroe public school system is much better because of all the.
Absolutely.
So thank you.
It's awesome.
Thank you.
I would hope you'd join FaceTime and watch us.
You're really going on a Monday night at 7:30.
Sarah said that to me tonight and I assumed. And I said, no, I'm going cold turkey.
Just answer your phones every now and then.
She's going to block us.
Yeah.
You're going to call her from the meeting.
Yes.
Done in 2016, didn't we?
She'll know the answer too.
She'll say, yeah, it was May 13.
Well, so I'll second Jerry's motion, but I just had to say that first, so thank you.
Thank you both.
Any other discussion? All right, hearing none, all in favor? Thank you, motion is denied.